Okay, I'd like to call the regular meeting to Bellflower City Council to order Monday, November 26, 2018, at 7:05 for open session. We've reconvened in here to open session and there was no reportable action enclosed. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Santinas.
Here.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Coops.
Here.
Mayor Dutton.
Here. Okay, can I have everybody rise for the invocation led by myself and the pledge of allegiance by Public Safety Director Joel Hockman? "Oh Heavenly Father, thank you for all you do. Please bless our actions here tonight and assist us in building a strong and caring May you lend us the wisdom to find solutions for the issues that become before us and let us make the best decisions for the betterment of this city. We thank you for the opportunity to help others and the opportunity to try to improve our way of life. We ask for your protection and blessings of our military men and women and firemen and police and may they always return safely to their families. In Jesus' name, amen."
Amen.
Let's all face the flag and join me in saying...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Bellflower's annual Christmas tree lighting ceremony is scheduled for this Friday, December 7th. The Bellflower community is invited to join us in this seasonal celebration. The Free Family Event will take place on downtown Bellflower at Friendship Square with a special appearance from Santa Claus. Also, the Mayfair High School Vocal Ensemble will also be performing in a variety of holiday songs. The popular snow sledding area that we introduced last year with real snow will return and along with an expanded play area and a smaller sled run for the little guys. That will perfect the little ones, be perfect just for the little ones. For more information on the Bellflower's holiday and festivities, contact Parks and Rec Department at 804-1424, extension 2261. Mayor Protem, Sunny Santinas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With the recent news of a typhus infection in Bellflower's neighboring city, the Los Angeles County's Department of Public Health is combating the outbreak by educating residents about how to avoid and reduce contact with fleas. Fleaborn typhus can be spread to humans from bacteria found in infected fleas. Visit your healthcare provider or call 211. For general information, you can also visit www.ph.lacounty.gov. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Juan Garza.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Children's Holiday Party at Sims Park is on Saturday, December 15th, from 10:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Come enjoy crafts, holiday activities, refreshments, and a visit with Santa. This event is free and open to the public. The event will be held at Sims Park located at 16614 South Clark Avenue. For more information on Bellflower's holiday festivities, please contact the Parks and Recreation Department at area code 562-804-1424, extension 2261. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Garza. Councilmember Coops.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Sponsorship opportunities are available for the upcoming 25th Annual Bravo Awards. Bravo stands for Bellflower recognizes acts of valor and outstanding service. The prestigious award will be presented on Thursday, February 7th, 2019, at 11:00 a.m. in the morning in the William and Jane Bristol Civic Auditorium inside Bellflower City Hall. Jim Abbott, a major league pitcher with the Los Angeles Angels and the New York Yankees, among other teams, will serve as our special keynote speaker along with other local dignitaries. You may remember Jim Abbott was a major league baseball player that had only one in hand and he made it to the big leagues. Did I get that right, Jeff? Okay. Jeff knows our baseball consultant. The inciting program is the perfect opportunity to acknowledge the heroic efforts of Bellflower Public Safety Officers, sheriff's deputies, fire department personnel, emergency rescue workers, and local community heroes. Now's the time to give back to these brave men and women for their valiant efforts. For a complete list of sponsorship opportunities, so here's the catch, you can give money to this, please visit our website or call 562-804-1424, extension 2267. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Coops. Do we have a special presentation from Steve and Nagy? Or do we do that at public comments? Yeah, okay. It's not on my agenda, but I knew you were here. Come on up. Come on up, we'll do it right now. Okay. I had a heads up, but I thought it would be written down, I'm sorry.
No, not a problem. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council, city staff, and everyone in attendance. For those of you that don't know, my name is Steve Nagy, I'm with the Office of Congresswoman Linda Sanchez. And unfortunately, I will not be able to attend the tree lighting ceremony next Friday. However, in keeping with office tradition, I have here the official 2018 United States Congressional Holiday Ornament for you to put on Bellflower's tree. It even comes with a handy dandy little...
Description booklet.
Description of it. Apparently, it's got marble from the Capitol, so it's really something special. Hopefully, you take a look at it and display it proudly on your tree.
Maybe we'll put it on the indoor tree so nobody kypes it.
That's a great idea. That is a good idea.
Just saying. Even though the tree's right down from the public, you know, the sheriff's substation. Thank you so much. Okay, public comments, Mr. Stewart.
This is the time set aside for the public to address the City Council on matters not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the City Council should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor, and state your name for the record. If you wish to address the City Council on an agenda item, you may do so by approaching the podium as we review that particular item. You'll be given a reasonable amount of time to address the City Council.
Okay, this is the time set aside for residents and their community to talk about anything that's not on the agenda, so it's kind of like an open mic for a reasonable amount of time, so anybody wanting to come up and share anything with us, you're welcome to at this time. If you don't hurry, I'm going to hit the gavel down and we're moving on. Hi.
My name is Jennifer Moran. I'm new to this, so I don't know what I'm really supposed to say. So, there's some issues. I live in the city of Bellflower on Laurel in between Archered and Ardmore. There's a lot of water waste, a lot of meters that are just leaking to the gutters. And I've asked the water company for that district to have it replaced. They did come out, fixed our meter, however, the water is still residing into the gutter. So, when I take my trash cans out, boom, I'm smashed with sewage water.
With sewage water?
Yeah, because that's...
Gutter water.
Yes.
Gutter water, okay. There's a difference in gutter waters.
Yes.
Is it because the trees uplifted the curb or is it the meters, the actual water meters are leaking into the gutter?
I believe that a lot of the meters on Laurel need servicing. That it stops from one point to another, so you have...
What water company is that?
Bellflower Somerset.
I believe it's the water company right up here, yes. And so, I'm trying to get a hold of that just because water wastes mosquitoes...
Oh, yeah.
...and things it breeds. And I've only been here two months, so I'm trying my best. And I did take quite a spill, a fall across the street from the property walking to the corner liquor store one time after I first lived here, which the city did come out pretty quickly and rectify, took out two trees, replaced the concrete. My issue is they then know of one complaint that is one year old for them to put the correct cement in by on top of our property where our driveway is, so now they have asphalt poked over like this instead of it smoothed out flat. So, that's going to be another hazard if an elderly person comes over there with a walker or somebody like me that has...
What's the address?
...and stuff.
What's the address? Or is it right next door to yours, right?
It's on the actual property, 9613.
If it's okay with you, now you didn't have to do it on the microphone, okay?
Oh, oh.
Yeah. Yeah, get hurry, that thing you do discreetly that way. Is that all you had to say?
No.
Okay.
Just good luck.
Sorry.
That's how the mayor gets rid of you, go outside if you're happy.
And I know better, too. It's your first time and I know better than letting you take off over there. Sorry.
Live and learn how well I'm well-trained.
Well, I was supposed to know better.
I listen well. No, it's okay. So, and then my other issue is that like on the street, I know it's a very much rental area, but still, there's not ample parking, of course. That's just going to be a problem everywhere in every city. However, these driveways pull out like this and if they butt up right onto the curb, you can't enter or exit your driveway of your own home.
If a parked car in the street.
Correct. And I see on the other side of town where my other family members live that they do put a little piece of red here and a little piece of red here so that these people don't block off people's driveways or you have ample room to put your trash can. I have to put my trash can out 24 hours ahead of time or my trash will never get picked up. And I am handicapped with lupus and other alien issues, so that asphalt being like that is not really good for me.
All right. So, we have the address that you gave to staff already.
Yeah, and I have some pictures...
So, we'll use that as a common thing about the rest of the driveway approaches.
Yeah, I have some pictures on my phone and then across the street, there's a fire hydrant. And when the city came out to approach where I fell and how I fell and took care of that issue, which was very prompt, thank you guys for that. The fire hydrant has no red marking, so people tend to park out in that area. So, it's kind of like a U shape when you come out of the driveway there because there's a car here, a car here, and cars here. And it's a very narrow street. I don't even know how the fire department would get to me in the amount of an emergency to get that fire hydrant if there were perhaps a fire.
All right, well, you can address that with staff and what I would suggest you do is give your phone number to the young lady over there and along with the address and they can reach out to you.
All right, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, Jennifer. Anybody else want to come forward?
Mayor, staff, ladies and gentlemen, I just have a couple items this evening I'd like to bring up. And as you know, I'm always looking out for the city and looking down the road and how to solve some problems and also save some money. Have we ever looked at or even thought about looking at eliminating some city jobs? For instance, public safety. You have this guy that follows the street sweeper around at an astronomical amount of money and fringe benefits. So, instead of having him follow that around, why don't you talk to the trash service, have them mount the camera on their truck and as they're going down the street sweeping the street, you automatically get a picture and a date of the vehicle of which you take that paperwork and you send it into your collection agency. Now, you've saved yourself the $41 an hour that you pay the guy to chase the trash truck, or I mean, the street sweeper. So, there's ways to save things if you stop and think a little bit, and we should be trying to save things because we know it's inevitable before something really happens due to the perk programs. So, I'm just offering this as a comment. And then the other thing, it seems this homeless thing, I wish we could get a better handle on it. It looks so bad when they're living in the cubby holes on the boulevard, also at the banks where you've gotten L. But, well, I hate to say this, but I think maybe they might have got one of Dan Coops' refrigeration boxes to put alongside that one bank so they could have a tube tent deal. But, it looks bad. It really, it really does. It turns people off and then it makes people nervous, too, to go into the bank. And I know that the banks have, I know a bank that's complained about it and it took three or four days before they moved the damn grocery carts and his junk out from a union bank. And that brings up the last item. When are we going to do something about the union bank parking lot? This has been ongoing for too damn long about giving the property back to the bank so they can widen and increase the size of that parking lot that is not movable, you can't move in just because somebody wanted to have a big name by putting it, "Welcome to Bellflower." It's the wrong thing. So, you know, I've brought this up over the past year quite a bit and I want to have something done about it. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to come forward and say anything? Joe, I know you've got something to say.
Anybody else first?
You wouldn't come without talking to the mic.
Right. John brought me something, brought something up to my attention about the street sweeping. A lady told me to tell you guys that the street sweeper that contracts for our city is moving too fast. They don't do an adequate job of sweeping on the streets, particularly on the curves. And I think we should get more, more, better service for the money we're paying them. Plus, I think, and I've made this suggestion before, that CCNR or CRNR, whatever that outfit is, that picks up our, cleans our streets, that they should put on a magnetic bumper on the front of their vehicles before the brushes to pick up metal and screws and nails and bolts off the streets because a lot of people are getting flat tires, not just from the nails and the screws, but they're getting them from the bolts now that's coming through their tires. My daughter just had one the other day and that's brought it to your attention that maybe they could put that there and they can pick up the metal before the brushes even hit it and they could recycle that metal and make money, pay for that magnetic device that they put across their front bumper. And I think that would make go a long way towards stopping a lot of flat tires in our city and extra expense to the people that got them. But, I'd like to beg the indulgence of the City Council tonight and speak on a topic that needs to be said before I, as a World War II veteran, leave this trouble room and kick the bucket and can't speak no more. I wish to use our city forum to chastise the education system in Bellflower and America today because the school board does not run their meetings like our City Council does and I believe they don't really care. Many speak about education today in glowing terms. That is not the real truth as I see it. The dumbing down of American education system continues on a daily basis and is cheating our American youth greatly for their and America's future. In addition, today our, our youth today are being short-changed because California does not teach American history anymore and that's more than a crime to have that happen. They do not get to know the truth about where our freedoms come from. And the most drastic thing I can think of is that they're teaching the kids today, even in the Bellflower school, Spanish in an American school. That, to me, is very disturbing and stupid because most of those people coming into our borders, many legally and illegally, are already speaking Spanish. We don't have to teach them how. Common sense and logic would tell me that the opposite should be done. Teach English as it was done in the last 200 or more years, up to the present time. This is the language of America that our heroes died for, not Spanish. The takeover of America is following when we have to include it in every document phrase. Our foreign ancestors who made America the greatest nation on earth today changed themselves for America, not changed America for the country they came from and became true Americans. The sons of these illegal immigrants gave up their lives to save America and the world, not undocumented or hyphenated people. They were all American citizens then. When we see on TV or read about the statistic ratings of education, California being 46 out of 50 state ratings, then something is drastically wrong. When California is almost next to Guam Island in the Pacific Ocean area rating, that is bad spelled with capital letters. We have so many supposedly educated people like professors and other fancy titles with BA, master degree, and PhD, but in my opinion, two dog on many have mastered degrees in BS, bull stuff, with a PhD behind it, meaning piled higher and deeper. You have to be, you have to be wrong or left because you can't get into college today because if you were right, you have to be left or, lefty or wrong. Students are not being taught in the old time, traditional, time honored, proven method, the three Rs, reading, writing, and arithmetic properly. And yet, so many go on to our liberal colleges with a lack of basic learning in elementary grades. The old school of my youth taught us well enough to save this entire world from domination by evil men and forces. I don't say this as a bragging thing, but as a fact because I and so many true Americans lived through World War II when America did indeed save this whole world with help from our allies whom we supplied with all the necessity meritorial to wage war, fighting and men, fighting evil men and forces bent on dominating this whole world. I and so many true Americans are extremely grateful to America, first responders who gave up their futures and their lives that we might be here today surviving in freedom. I salute them brave heroes all the time, deservedly so, in honor, not only on special days, back to school days. The three Rs have been replaced with so many Ls like loony, lefty, liberalism, that it seems like a lot of L is being taught today, making it like a L on earth for us guys, not love of country and others. I'd like to add that old time standard phrase with a few new letters to make it even better, such as right instead of wrong or lefty. Respect and responsibility to make America great again. After all, this is our one and only country we have to live in, undivided, but in the big capital letter U, meaning you and me, United States, to make America great like it was when I was growing up. It is the United States of America, the good old USA, world famous, interpreted by me, by my letters A, meaning all of us. It will be a great, more meaningful America for us all, true Americans. California and other states that quit teaching American history to our youth are selling out a true USA tradition that gives our students the sacrifices, trials, tribulations, and wars endured by our brave forefathers and sons who fought and gave up their lives for all of us in the USA, the United States of America. Schools are teaching too much long division, dividing country instead of figures on paper. And with all the Ls contributing to the demise of America, America, America does not own any other country anything, a living or prosperity, just because they are, their own home country is failing them. Why aren't these diehard illegal aliens not demanding and fighting for their rights and their life in their home country, not demanding entry here as if it's owed to them as strangers? Weak there, strong here, and demanding entry in the front of a line. If anybody here or anywhere don't think America is worth protecting by a wall, then I suggest they tear down their walls or fences and let anybody come into their house or place of home. America deserves more protection of all by a wall today now to keep us secure. Our military were organized to protect America from all domestic and foreign intruders. Our foreign aid to those countries should be birth control material to stop their overrebreeding poverty, population, and problems for all countries in our world today. Change is okay if it is good for all in America. May God bless America always. May it survive forever in spite of goofy people and politicians. Merry Christmas and a happy, healthy new year to all everybody in the USA.
Excuse me. Swallow's wrong. Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
Yeah, just state your name and sign in when you get a chance. You can do it later, too. You can do it when you're done. Don't lose your thought.
So, my name is Tanya McMillan and I am a resident of Bellflower. I am a mother, I am a childcare provider, I am a liberal, I am a union member, and I'm also an American. I am so grateful that we have freedom of speech and I'm also grateful that I can use this time to have the freedom to say that I am offended, I feel like I have been disrespected by some of the comments that were put forward today. I know that you can't respond to them, but as somebody sitting in this audience, I can. And I'm choosing to do that right now. I appreciate certain views, but there are some that I cannot tolerate. And when somebody can get up and share the most racist, ugly comments and expect everybody to go along with it, then that, to me, is crossing the line. I thank you guys so much for the work that you're doing here in Bellflower. I thank you that I have this moment to stand here at this podium and give my response to something that I just heard that made the hair on the back of my neck raise up. I live here, too. I've had history lessons. I appreciate the education system and yes, it definitely needs a lot of work. We should not be 46 in this state, in this country. And we've got a lot of work to do. But if nobody ever stands up and says something to ugliness, it just keeps us deeper in the mud and I'm not going to stay in the mud. I don't live there, I have no intentions on doing. I live here in Bellflower with a lot of different folks who speak a lot of different languages. We all have to live here together. I'm proud to be a citizen of the city of Bellflower and I'm proud that I have this opportunity to speak. And so, I thank you for your time. I'll sign this later.
Thank you, Tanya.
Hi, I'm Tracy McSparron, Superintendent of Bellflower Unified, and I just want to assure the council here that we do teach 12 years of English language to our students. We do teach government, we teach American history. Our district actually requires government, which is not a state require, not government, geography, which is not a state requirement, but we believe that students need to understand the world we live in. We also teach a full year of government and only a semester is required by the state. So, we do an extensive process of trying to make sure that our students are aware of American history, the contributions that people have made in the past, and the path that we need to be sure that we are on the future to make informed decisions. I invite anyone to attend a board meeting and share information. I invite them to come see our civic democracy program. We have an award-winning school that is been honored by the state of California for the fact that they do teach civics and government and the involvement that our students have in not just our local government, but also the state, federal, and national levels and international issues that are affecting the world and ultimately where we live in the city of Bellflower. So, I just want to assure you that we are addressing those issues and thank you very much.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Honorable City Council Staff. My name is Robyn Snow. The opinions that are expressed tonight were revolting and disgusting, and if he wants to make comments like that, put it in a letter to the editor, not to the city of Bellflower. Put it in a, send it to the President of the United States. It is not necessary to bring it up here in front of the city of Bellflower. So, those opinions are not those... So those opinions are not those of the people in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Anybody else wish to?
My name is Laura Sanchez Ramirez. I'm the Board President of the Bellflower Unified School District, and I'm here to assure you that our students, each and every one of them, that are Americans, and I'm an American, and I'm proud to be an American, I am proud that I have military family that are serving our country right now, so I'm very proud of that. I have three cousins, nephews, that are serving right now. So I do take offense, and I'm sorry, but I do take offense. If you don't come to a board meeting, if you don't come and talk to me, how do you know what we do? That really angers me, I'm so sorry, because I defend every student. Every single student that's in our school district is important to me, not anything else. Each student, their education, where they come from, doesn't matter. We need to educate our children and teach them respect. If we don't teach them respect, if we don't act like, if we don't be respectful, how do we expect our kids to be respectful? We have to set the example first. I'm a parent, I'm a mother of four, and I have one stepson, so I have five kids, so I think I know what I'm talking about. I love every child in our district, and I'm trying to be more calm, sorry, I'm not trying to be angry, I'm not trying to, I'm trying to be peaceful, but do never attack my district, never attack my children, because each child in that district, I ha, I take full responsibility because I care about their education, and I thank you guys because you've been supportive all the time with our students. Dan Coops, Mary Dutton, Sunny Santinez, and Juan Garza. Each one of them have come to our events, each one of them have put even money to support our students, and I'm proud of our band kids in Bellflower High School. They've, they've got number one, our band in Mayfair are number one. And guess what? All those kids are doing really well, because not just the band programs, but our civic programs, and we also have a Calapse programs where the kids can also do vocation, they can do technical training. We have so much, so many good things in our district, and I'm very proud of that. And I want to thank you for everything that you've done, and we're going to continue partnering together, because we're going to continue to raise those kids, because it takes, what they say, village the community together. But let's be positive, because we need to show those children that we need to be adults so they can be good adults and great citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Anybody else wishing to come forward? Not seeing any, we're going to move on. Okay, I'm going to rearrange our, our agenda. I'm going to do thirteen A last. We're going to go into the consent calendar and get that out of the way right now. Is there any recusals on the consent calendar? I do, I have two, I got, I have one. I'm going to reaccuse myself from fourteen F, as in Frank, due to a property within five hundred feet of that location. Anyone else? Everybody good? Anybody want to pull any item? No? I'll make a motion to approve the balance of the cons, consent calendar as it was noted.
Second?
Motion and a second on the floor. Without objection, that'll be the order. Well, that was quick. Usually the consent calendar takes way longer than that. Now the main event. Mr. Stewart, thirteen A.
This is due to, the title of the item is consideration possible action to appoint a successor to City Council Member Ron Schnablegger's seat for a period of two years with a term ending December twenty twenty. The council has gone through, and I don't need to reread the entire staff report and won't do it, because of the, I didn't take a last meeting, but what's happened since then is the Subcommittee of the Mayor and the Mayor Pro Tem have met, they've reviewed the nine qualified applications that the city received to fill the seat, and tonight they have an option, amongst several different options to take. The first thing that's going to happen is that the City Council Ad Hoc Committee of the Mayor and the Mayor Pro Tem are going to report its findings, if, if possible, and, and there's a consensus there. The, the council has the option of appointing the member tonight or scheduling interviews and, and appointing folks, we, we are planning for December third at a special meeting, or alternatively, we take no other action. The only thing that's not listed on the staff report that it probably should draw attention to is that if the council cannot find a consensus and appoint a candidate over the next week, it would be necessary to call for a special meeting prior to December seventh, twenty eighteen, to schedule an election in March of twenty nineteen.
I think I read somewhere in the report, somewhere December third was the date.
December third, okay.
Of the interview.
If you do that, if you do that, but if, if there is no consensus, and I didn't state it in the recommendations, might probably need to call it out tonight, if there is no consensus found, the council will have to call an, an election for early in twenty twenty, and that is the unstated recommendation here. Otherwise, I think that it would be most appropriate for the council Subcommittee to report its findings and then have a discussion where they want to go from here.
All right. With that said, as, as the City Manager said, myself and Sunny Santinez was on the Ad Hoc Committee to, to review our applicants and whatnot, and I'm going to let Sunny share the process that we went through as a starting.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Before I start, I just want to acknowledge the presence of Joyce Schnablegger in the audience. You know that we're looking for someone to replace Ron, and that, that person is going to be selected, who could be selected, I think has got a big shoot to fill, so I just want to acknowledge your presence tonight. As the City Manager stated, it's, it's a long process to, to take from, from here point, from the time that the City Council approved the, the process to replace Ron. And I just want to kind of explain a little bit, to kind of reiterate that our desire is to come up with a recommendation tonight and come up with a, an appointee to replace Ron. That's our goal tonight. If we cannot, then there'll be an interview on the third, December of the finalist. And then again, if we cannot come up with a consensus on the third, then there's going to be another meeting on the seventh to call for a special election. So I hope that that is clear in terms of what the processes could be if we cannot come up with a consensus tonight. By consensus, that means that we need to get a vote of three, three votes for tonight to any particular applicant. I'm using the word applicant because they're not running for office, they're basically applying for a job of City Council, so it, sometimes it can be used interchangeably, but for the purpose of tonight's description, we have nine applicants. First of all, I want to thank the City Council for giving us the, the trust and the confidence to, to, to act as a Subcommittee to review the applications of those interested in replacing Ron. And also, as, as the City Manager mentioned, we have nine applicants, and I really want to thank you first of all for coming forward and expressing your interest. It is wonderful that nine applicants, that is awesome. That means that District One is alive, a lot of residents are really interested in coming up and do public service in the city of Bellflower. So I really want to thank you before everything gets lost in the shuffle later on. I really want to thank each one of you for taking the time to fill out the application, because it really took a lot of time and guts, basically, to come forward, you know? It's, the City Council is not for everyone, so I really appreciate you for coming forward. So in terms of the process, nine applicant, nine applicants came forward, and in the process of, social media is wonderful, I'll tell you that, because right away, we, I, I came across one, one applicant that says that in, in his, in his, in his profile, that he lives in another, another city. So I contacted the City Clerk, I asked the City Clerk, to be fair to everyone, can you ask the, the County Register Office to find out exactly when you registered as a voter in the city of Bellflower, particularly in District One? So we got that information, and it's a public record, it is in the staff report, it shows all the applicants, together with their current address, and then when they, when they registered as a voter in District One. We went through the process of reviewing all the applications, and most, all of them have also their bio, and also they have a narrative. I think it was limited to two hundred words, correct? And specifically, it should be a, a specific font style, so our City Clerk again is very, very meticulous in terms of the process, and I know that our City Clerk put a lot of efforts in doing. So thank you, City Clerks, for doing your, your work for these applications. So what were we looking for? Our Mayor and myself were looking for certain characteristics of this individual. Number one is, is the commitment to the city. That is number one. Because when we were, when we were deliberating about the applicants, of Ron's mind, Ron is always in our mind. Ron is very committed to the city of Bellflower. I, I, I think if you have to cut him up, I think the, the blood that will flow will spell out the DNA of Bellflower. That is Ron. So in the image of Ron, we're looking for someone who is as committed as Ron to the city of Bellflower. We're looking for someone who will serve in the city, who's put his or her time in the service of the city. We're looking for someone who can hit the ground running. We have so many things, great things in the city of Bellflower going, going on right now, a lot of good things. So we want to keep this momentum, so we want to see this person be basically, be part of our team right away from day one, and who can do the job right away. And as we narrowed down the list, keep in mind, we started with nine applicants. So we eliminated one, so down to eight, and then minus one, down to seven, minus one, down to six, down to, minus one, down to five, four, three, and then two was the most, I, I guess, most difficult decision when it comes to coming up with one recommendation. And it took us a, a, we struggled, we struggled to come up with the, the final person, and we even called in the City Manager at some point to give us an interpretation of the process, just to make sure that we're doing it correctly. Okay? And I'm very pleased to report to you that I, I think we, we crossed all the Ts, that is all the Is, in terms of the process, I'm very, I, I can assure you that every stone has been turned, okay, so to speak? And I, I, I think we, we really evaluated all the candidates in terms of how this person will fit into the City Council, how this person will work for the city of Bellflower, how this person will, will relate to our citizens and our residents in the city of Bellflower. So with that, I would like to turn it over to our Mayor. We, we make a great, great team to the Mayor for additional comments and to make the final announcement. Mayor?
Thank you. Yeah, we made a good team. It's, it's, it's interesting how, you know, the only thing I, I can say that application process was close was giving out scholarships. When you have fifty scholarship applications, how you weed them out as a team and whatever, and, and you have your eyes set going one way, and then, and then the data and your conversation go another way, it never fails, it was pretty much the same. And Sunny was a, a good committee colleague that, and where I saw, you know, applicants and something in the application that stuck out, he would see something in another application that was stuck out, and kind of went back and forth, and as we narrowed it down to, you know, the final few, it, it kind of stuck out with, to, you know, it was like a no-brainer, this is who we should need to do. So with that said, I'm going to talk to my colleagues here. We have four finalists, and we are going to bring all the name, four names to you if we, if it comes down to it, but we actually have one name that, that we decided, and without sharing all of the four names, if you want to go on our recommendation, you know, if you got, if I, I can tell you the name and whatever, and if there's a second and a, and a motion and a second, we can go with that one, and if, or I can give all the four names and see. So I just was going to ask my colleagues which way you want us to go. I was going to ask and just, just see, it's, I mean, you trust us that much of all the applications to throw out one name, or give you more to choose from? I'm hearing crickets.
No, I, I don't want to interrupt your comments, but I, I think the process that we outlined was for you gentlemen to act as an ad hoc and come up with a recommendation for the rest to consider, so I-
Yeah, we can go, we give you the recommendation, we have no problem with that. We just didn't want to, as, I tell you that, you know, we're here, as the seven o'clock came, that's why we were late, we were thinking, oh, gosh, you know, does it look like we're just picking somebody? And it was just us, too. And I was starting to get shaky legs, because we worked together, and we've always worked together, and there's no, no sense trying to, you know, ram something down someone's throat, so to speak. I just kind of talk rough, a little harsh sometimes, but that's what it was, that's what it felt like to me. And so then we decided, I says, I'll discuss it up here with my colleagues, that, you know, we have some finalists, or we have the, you know, number one and the finalists. And with that, and the finalist was Ray Hamada. And if you, that's the person that we come up and we agreed after about, I think we were two and a half hours struggling and, and come up with that name, and so if there's a motion and a second, we'll proceed. If not, I'll throw us the other names.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Got a motion on the floor by Juan Garza and a second by Councilmember Coops. Call roll, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Santinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Garza.
Aye.
Councilmember Coops.
Aye.
Mayor Dutton.
Aye.
Yeah, and it, and as we got to the, the last of the, you know, the names, it was, it was pretty tough, as Mayor Pro Tem would tell us. But with that, I think-
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If you don't mind, may I make-
Yeah, if you make any comments?
Yes, if you don't mind.
Don't mind at all.
I just want to echo the comments that Mayor Pro Tem Sunny Santinez made before. What was great about this process is, to his point, there's a lot of people that, that showed an interest, which, to his point, there's a lot of activity going on in the first district, which is great, but I really personally want to thank all the applicants that applied for this, it, like, Mayor Pro Tem Santinez, Sunny Santinez said, it's not easy, it's a lot of documentation, a lot of paperwork, and in a lot of ways, when you go through this process, I think what you find is that you kind of, if you're a private person, you do kind of expose a lot of your personal information out there. So I absolutely want to thank all ten applicants that showed an interest in this, and I want to congratulate our, our incoming council member, but again, thank you for your interest, and it's nice to see that, that our first district is, is alive and well, and that you'll be represented under council. That completes my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Garza. Any other comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Another historic evening in the city of Bellflower, something that doesn't happen very, very often, and to be able to have the kind of participation from the district has really been fun to watch. We were concerned as to whether or not we'd get any applicants, you know? Who wants to step into this deal? It's not all that much fun sometimes, but it's an honor to serve, and those that put their best foot forward to ask if they could participate were all quality people. Any one of you that applied could have done this job. It's just a matter of whether or not the committee thought that you had the, the experience and the kind of activities throughout the city that would be beneficial to the team. I want to thank you for all participating. I want to thank you for coming out this evening and showing that you have confidence in the system. I'm glad that Juan and I chose these guys to be the, the committee. We did the right thing.
I know sweat off your back.
We're good at volunteering other people, but you can see the things that have happened when we worked together. When Ron was here, and he's still with us in spirit, we, you know, and that chair is empty, we're, he's still here. When we think about the things that have come about in the last seven to ten years, when Bellflower was thought, you know, just, nothing goes on in Bellflower, and to see the revitalization of Boulevard, to see the things that are going on in building, to see the new sales tax, to see an In-N-Out, to see a fire museum that's all paid for, to see a parking structure, to see a guy that wants to bring four movie theaters to Bellflower. I talked to Sonic Burger not long ago. These are wonderful, wonderful things, and this wouldn't have come about unless you had a council pulling in the same direction with a staff to work with us. So these are exciting times. We're hoping to keep the momentum going as we have over the last seven or eight years, and we're confident with our, with the choice that has been offered, that we will continue the momentum, and will continue to be proud of Bellflower. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Coops. You want to follow that act, Sunny?
Well, I think I've said enough already about the appointment, so let me just kind of divert your attention. I just want to mention that today I- I just want to mention that today I participated in the unveiling of the all-new electric school bus by the Balfour Unified School Districts. Congratulations on that milestone. I think they bought two new buses that basically have zero emission. So that's going to be good for the city. That means that there's less pollutants, there's going to be less pollutants up in the air when these two buses go around our city. So congratulations, School District, for your fine job.
Gotcha. And I would just like to say the thank you to all the applicants. I know a lot of you personally and some not so well, but great applicants. I can tell your heart was there to do what you had to do in such a short time to get that application in was a milestone in itself. It shows that every one of the applicants were committed and whatnot. And I just appreciate, you know, District 1 is, that has that much energy there. And with that, we're going to go into council reports if there's anything left. You want to add anything, Mr. Pro Tem Santinez?
Nope.
And Mr. Garza?
Just a couple of comments, Mr. Mayor. On December 6th, Metro is going to be considering an updated project description for the upcoming light rail. It's a big meeting for our project. So if there's anybody, if any of my colleagues are available, that'd be a good preneed to go to and support this project. An interesting update, new element to this project is Speaker Rendon has asked for consideration to add another station to the project. Aside from all the stations that are, would be along the right of way, he's asking for the consideration of a station to be added, basically at the confluence of the LA River. And I believe it's Los Cruels Creek. I'm not sure what it is. It's in Southgate. There's a big vision of having the LA River being master plan. And there's a lot of schematics and ideas for improving the LA River itself. And so he's asked for that. And so that'll be considered on the 6th as well. So just a, one of the things that I recommended to Eco Rapid as we consider this for support is that if that station is added, that that's fine, as long as it doesn't delay the project, the project we want done by 2028. And then lastly, I want to thank Congresswoman Sanchez for asking me and Chief Errett, who's here, and also the City Manager for Hawaiian Gardens, Ernie Hernandez, for being on the Service Academy Selection Committee interviews. For those of you that have been a part of that, it's a really big honor to be a part of being able to select our local high school students that will be, that will be accepted and participate in our military service academies like West Point and Annapolis. And so every congressional district in the nation gets an allotment of slots. And so not every applicant gets in. And I can tell you that after going through this process for the second year in a row, you really do get reminded to the quality of our youth in our community. So it's an honor to have been part of it. I want to thank her and I want to thank my fellow panelists. And I was happy to represent Bellflower in that effort. So with that, I complete my comments, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garza. Mr. Coops?
All right. So Debbie, I'm glad you're here tonight because I'm going to adjourn this meeting in mom's honor. All right, so I'll read the, now, I'll start off by saying Velma Smith, who passed away here just on January 18th. And Debbie, if I get this wrong, you tell me. She loved Elvis. All right. So I brought my Elvis glasses and my colleagues' hat.
That's a hunka hunka burning something right there. I love you. Oh, thanks.
All right. Got it?
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, now I got to read the story. Fred, you missed the picture. All right. All right. Velma Mae Smith. Velma was born January 18th, 1926, Long Beach, California. Passed away in November 19th, 2018, at the age of 92. Velma was the wife of dearly departed former Mayor, Councilmember Ray T. Smith. Velma was a member of the Eastern Star and the Balfour Women's Club. She worked in the aerospace industry at Rockwell, at NASA, and Boeing for 35 years. Gemini Space Shuttle and the B-1B projects were some of her endeavors. Velma retired and began her career as her husband's office manager. She was his number one supporter in all his endeavors, such as the City Council, the Elks, the Masons, the Qantas, and the Vector Control. He always said he could not have had a better wife or mother for his children. Velma survived by her son Michael and daughter Deborah, who we just saw this evening, son-in-law Warren Hamilton, grandsons Ricardo and Mason Hamilton, sister-in-law Dorothy Odell, and many nieces and nephews. There will be a celebration of life for Velma on Saturday, January 19th, 2019, at her home because Deborah said, we got to get to the holidays and then we'll do it right. As that's a quote, correct?
Correct.
Our deepest sympathies and heartfelt condolences go out to the entire Smith family. Now, what this started was when Ray, it was when Ray was going out of office and we had a going-away ceremony. And so a former, just say his initials, Clyde Wilson. And I paid for a, you got a little play, Bob. Paid for Elvis impersonator to come up in City Hall. And that was the theme of the evening. And hunka hunka burning love and all the good stuff was saying. And I made sure everybody had a pair of these glasses. So I found that I still had four or five left over and thought this is the appropriate time to, no city money was spent on these glasses. But Velma was a wonderful person. She knew if you had a problem filling out your Form 700, she could do that blindfolded. She was so good at all the clerical stuff. She loved to laugh. She loved the Lakers. She loved Kobe. Am I hitting it all, Deb?
Basketball and Elvis.
Yeah, basketball and Elvis. We're going to miss her. But 92 years old, she had a good run. And I think there are many of us in the room except for Joe Savetko who signed a contract right now and said, if I get to be 92, I'll take it. Joe's already passed that up. But there you have it. Just a great loss for the city of Balfour. But she made a difference because Ray was up here being supported by Velma Smith. And Ray had a great impact on this town throughout the 50s, 60s, 70s, up until the time of his passing a few years ago. When I was mayor two years ago, we lost three mayors within six months. And that's Ray Smith passed away, and Cleveland passed away, and Dorothy King passed away. So it was a big loss for Balfour to have all these old war horses all of a sudden be gone from the picture. But that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. What's that? Yeah.
Well, I hope they don't come in threes, Dan.
I don't take myself too serious, you say. But I thought, you know, because this is a serious evening, a historical evening. And I wanted to try to lighten it up a little bit because there's some people out here that are truly disappointed in what happened tonight. And I understand that. But, you know, we did our best with what we have. And I think you'll find out as time goes along that this will just be fine. We're going to miss Ron, but Mr. Hamada will do a good job for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coops. And I think everything's been said here tonight. And God bless Velma Smith. And I really appreciate the audience tonight and coming out and staying through this and giving us a little feedback. And with that, I'm going to adjourn this meeting in the memory of Ms. Velma Mae Smith to the next regular meeting of the Balfour City Council at 5:30 PM, Monday, December 10th, 2018, where, 2018, December 10th, where the oath of office ceremony for the City Council and reorganization will begin at 7 PM, along with our new appointee. Thank you.